...for Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Fifteen more. Yes. Mr. Braver?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Steinbach?
Here.
Mr. Fertiasu?
Here.
Ms. George?
Here.
Two of seven members of the council. That's all state representatives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We want to be grateful to you. Thank you for all of your service and the efforts of the citizens here in the city of Council. And you've served for, for the twenty-five years of the normal citizens that do this. And so here's the comments from the community.
We have our fellow commissioners here, building authorities, who have been getting loaded for fifteen and twenty years. I just want to say that it was a pleasure. I was brought on by Newman, who was in a store at the office. And it was a pleasure working on it. I'm not going anywhere for the Phila Pass Care here, which is a lot of business. But I'd like, for those who don't know, that the building is amazing. It really is amazing. I can tell you, I've worked with many cities, and this city is like our, is the best. I mean, in helping people get their done business and our business, I mean, from the top down, I can tell you that I always tell other cities that you should only try to do it the way it's offered. Because we've all had our hard, you know, tough times lately, but the city was really, you know, for me, you know, in our business, inspectors, building department, everybody was a partner, was trying to help us. And Building Authority, you know, does a great job, and it was always nice to be able to be there and help us do this.
Mr. Neimer, nice to see you again, and it's a pleasure to have worked with you all these years and you've built a bill on this person and doing things over the last twenty-five years. We had so many buildings. Thank you, people who were in control over and helped us develop. The manner that you people handled yourselves was just great, and the amount of work you did. Building Authority seems like to be something that's down there, we visit there, and lots of people don't really know what you do, but I know the council budget set money for things to get done and nice to get it done. They were very professional, you know, and thank you so very much.
And Mr. Wicker, Mr. Winkle, and then Mr. Higginsoe, I think has probably been there longer than me. I think so, they're all long time people, devoted staff.
I, we don't see you that often, but we know, those of us who live along, we know the work you do, and it's extremely important and extremely valuable, and it's a very important role in this city. So I want to personally say thank you. I know you by your reputation more than personally, but you've just been a jewel and an asset to this community, so we appreciate it so much. And it's hard to say goodbye, I have to tell you that.
Well, I'm not going anywhere.
But in that sense, you know, that you won't be active, but you'll be, you'll be with us, I know that enough.
I will. I will. And I just want to mention also that Kathy, Mr. Sherratt, the administrator with us, I mean, so we really, I can't, everybody at that small table, but I will be around, I'll be always happy to help. And...
Well, council, we're going to count on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say, um, Building Authority, to me, the Building Authority is welcome to Santa Claus. You don't really see it very much, but the results are good.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add that Mr. Neimer's insights were brilliant, and his questions were thoughtfully.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on our Tuesday report mentioned by Reilly Nivel Fitness.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Happy to be here and happy to announce and invite entire council and entire general community, those watching us, who are here, and those who are watching us. We are welcoming in the Jewish holiday of Hanukkah, starting on Wednesday evening, November twenty-seventh, just two days from now. And we're very excited to be able to have an hour lighting once again. I'm right outside here in front of Southfield City Hall. And we're going to be adding this year a live fire show, which we arranged since the last meeting when I was here. So this way we'll add some extra light, since unfortunately it may seem dark in this world, but Hanukkah has a very universal message, which is, light will always prevail over darkness. No matter how great the darkness is, and no matter how small the light is, the light pushes away a lot of darkness. So we're arranging to Detroit's surface, they're going to bring a magician, who's going to perform the fire tricks, together with a special safety person, who will be in addition to the one performing, and provide their proper safety. And everyone's invited to come, and I'm very happy to be here once again.
And can you commute the time again?
It is beginning at five-thirty. Everyone's encouraged to please bring warm clothing and maybe some rubbers, since we don't know how wet it will be out in the lawn. Keep warm, we'll keep the program short, but our hearts will be warm.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I was, I was watching on CBS, there was talk about the first, the unusual convergence of Hanukkah and Thanksgiving, and the calling of Thanksgiving. Have you heard that word?
Yes, a lot of people misnamed that.
Yeah, but it's, it's like many, many, many years, we, before this whatever happened in the end, which is the convergence, that was quite fascinating.
Correct, that is actually the fourth time since the founding of Thanksgiving on this date that it has occurred, together with the holiday of Hanukkah. But actually, the message of both holidays are very appropriate, they're very similar, they're both about thanking God for the freedom that we have here in this country, and recognizing the small miracles which may blend into nature, but really the miracles. So they're both about doing that. So on Wednesday evening, Thursday evening, everybody sits down for their Thanksgiving dinner, and knowing that Hanukkah too, it'll only enhance those words of praise that we have.
So happy convergence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we move to the attorney who has a formal introduction or a new deputy attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's your November twelfth, two thousand thirteen, three hundred and forty. I did present to you my recommendation for the appointment of Nina Miller here as Deputy City Attorney. At that time, your body did confirm her, and she is present tonight for her formal swearing in. She has her husband with her. Do I have three to rank him? You hereby swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the states, and the Southfield City Charter, and that you will faithfully perform the duty as Deputy City Attorney and for the City of Southfield, the county of Waltham, State of Michigan, according to the Bachelor Bureau of Health.
Aye. All right, we're going to welcome you to the day after congratulations for you. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Ah, yes, I was interested in you, I have twenty-three years, so rare.
Well, you know, she's the boss.
I would have.
All right, we move to the minutes for the regular meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, Council.
Madam President.
Um, Mr. Frasier.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Council of August the twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen. For...
We have a motion by Councilman Frasier supported by Councilman Sider to approve the regular minutes, as noted. I really have to give you all the favor, and my motion carries. The next item on our agenda is consent agenda, and we have a few items on this consent agenda, and I will abbreviate each, we want to include each of them. Consent agenda A is the annual agreement of Michigan Department of Transportation MDOT that provides our public works that are afforded to enter into MDOT lands for maintenance and other necessary functions in the interest of the state of the republic. Consent agenda B is the award of forty-two constructional fireside helmets, six treadmills, five elliptical trainers, and trainer certification, totaling thirty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars thirty-eight cents, with funding provided by the Federal Homeland Security System, the Fireside's grant, and also being a community safety statement in the Fire Department two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen budget. Consent agenda item C is to award the Michigan Police Department Charlotte Michigan, thirty thousand seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents for ammunition for the police department use for training and operation purposes. And these funds are also provided through the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Police Department budget. Consent agenda item D is the authorization for the mayor and council to find the investment management agreement with the type and device provided and magnitude capital, allocating two point five million dollars for the assets of Southfield Employment, retire and access them to each post, firm. This was reviewed by the Council Finance Committee on October tenth, two thousand thirteen, with a favorable review. Consent agenda item E is the annual agreement smart, the burden ability of holding police on transportation, for the funding in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for senior transportation services, and this amount is flat from the previous year. Agenda item F is for the state required, complying for the city is required to charge its employees a certain portion of the medical insurance premium, and this item was reviewed in our earlier case this evening. Consent agenda item G is to award the one, the first, the last, all contacts for the streets and highways department. The thousand R and P is the initial in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and the funds are provided in the places to come, and the life of the person is ten years, which means... Consent agenda item A is the adoption of open county hazard mitigation plan as recommended by our city's Homeland Security Emergency Department Director, Captain Bill Johnson, and this item was also reviewed in our earlier study session. Consent agenda item I is the authorization for the Chief Department of Environmental Quality Infrastructure Grant, in the amount of two million dollars, the matching rate from the city of Southfield of four hundred and forty-four thousand, and this item was reviewed again in our council study meeting just prior to this meeting, as well as in our council plan committee meeting on November twenty-second, which gave the favorable recommendation.
Chairman Chair.
Council members.
How long the approval of consent agenda items A through I?
Is supported?
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Seymour supported by Councilwoman Moss to approve the consent agenda items A through I, and there's a question by Councilman Moss.
Yeah, for consent agenda items, consent agenda items B and C, I think it's worth reemphasizing that we are providing full protection for both of our public safety departments, which is critical to maintaining the public safety of the city. And our fire chief does have fire helmets here, and I was wondering if you could come to the podium to describe some of the equipment that our Southfields finance will be utilizing to protect Southfield residents.
Good evening, and good night, Council members. Uh, this is a sample of the new helmet that meets all the NFPA standards. Uh, these helmets do have a shelf life, uh, they're exposed to a lot of products of combustion, and after time, they have to be replaced. Uh, they're costly to replace, and so what we did is we went to the federal government, the Systems of Firefighter Grant, and wrote a grant to replace these helmets. That was part of the grant, so we're going to have forty-two new helmets that will be purchased primarily through federal funds. And then we also, uh, as firefighters get older, and we look at statistics, the majority of firefighters die from cardiac incidents. So what we want to do is keep our firefighters healthy, and we wrote a grant to implement a physical fitness program, uh, and with that, we have trained, one of our firefighters was trained to a pure fitness level in firefighting, and we have six, excuse me, five new treadmills and five new stair climbers. They're a little bit different than elliptical trainer, they're, we do a lot of stair climbing in the fire service, through high rises, so these are actual stairs that move, and they're, they really improve cardiac fitness.
The equipment that's, you're going to replace, that's still in workable shape, does that go over to the Southfield?
Uh, I've talked to Mr. Sherratt, some of it's going to come. We have four treadmills in good working condition right now, that'll probably come over to the civic center here.
Okay. I know there's a health bug over there, we need to move to it.
Yeah, I'll work that out with Mr. Sherratt, whether a part of it goes here, a part of it goes there.
Okay.
All right, we have a council...
Um, it's possible that maybe one could go over to the nonprofit housing at McDonald's Tower?
I mean, I don't, I don't see why not. We, I made that slide, uh, we're evaluating the condition of the...
One of the residents, uh, that we could use some exercise equipment there?
And I'll, I'll work that out with Mr. Sherratt, if they only need three here, we can find the other, the other ones out there, too. Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Neimer supported by Councilwoman Moss to approve the consent agenda items A through I. Any other questions, call in favor.
Aye.
If opposed, motion carries. There are no questions here, and we move to site plan.
Goodness, Chair. Uh, under Site Plan thirteen oh five, Site Plan already requested from the Hopplebaum Rushmore Group, due to the holiday travel schedule, the applicant has requested to propose helmets to a date certain of December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen.
On the road.
Sure.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Travers supported by Councilwoman Frasier to postpone this to a date certain, December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. Any questions, call in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We move to the decision portion of the agenda, the first item, the first individual to be recognized is Mr. Damian Peary. As you give your name and your address for the address?
Sure, Damian.
Good evening, Damian Peary, thirty-two June Bridge, Spink, Detroit, Michigan, four eight zero seven.
Good day, Mallard, seven seven ten, East Littler Circle, Westland, Michigan, four eight one eight five.
Good evening to this council, to our council president, President Jordan. Uh, my name is Damian Peary, I'm principal at Pace Academy, right on Mount Vernon and Southfield Road, and I really wanted to come, uh, we've been in existence for fourteen years, we've been the great city of Southfield for the last four years. We represent over eight hundred and ninety students, uh, with over ninety-two staff members, uh, and we're grades K through five, and I really wanted to take this opportunity to introduce who we are as a school, and really open ourselves to a partnership in this great city. Uh, we have about twenty percent of our students that actually are Southfield residents, and I thought, what a great time in our history, uh, to really partner with the city and let you guys know specifically who we are and what we represent as far as high ideals in education, uh, and really making sure that excellence is really put forth in developing the whole child. Uh, we prepared a, a couple of packets for this body, uh, so that you guys would really be able to become more intimate in what we do and who we are. Uh, we just completed a playground project, of which we actually invested about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the council pro tem, Pracassi, had a chance to ribbon cut. Uh, we opened our playground facility to the entire city. Uh, often we have students, uh, young men, young ladies, uh, from around the, the great city of Southfield, actually come and actually play in our playground, and actually use our track, and use some of the elliptical and, uh, different machines that we have right outside, uh, for everyone to utilize, but I thought this was a great time to really let you guys know who we are.
All right, well, thank you for your time. The welcome man, and are you the question, Council?
Yeah, I would just like to mention that I did go there to cut the ribbon of the playground, and I went and had a chance to go through the school, and I was just amazed that not only the following teachers that were there, but the feminists of the school, and, well, and the playground was fantastic. I almost got run over, saved my life. Really pulled me out of that crowd there, I almost had it.
Thank you. Um, I'll also, on January sixteenth, I'd like to invite, this council will be having our Day of Service, uh, which we have an organization called Real Dads, um, great and excellent academic leaders. It's a group of our followers from the school that actually will be volunteering at the school for the entire day. Uh, we've done a lot to really encourage not only our mothers, but specifically our followers to be, become more active. We had, for the first time, our fathers brought our, their student to school, and we actually had about seventy dads actually bringing their student to school. Uh, and also during that evening, we'll be having our Martin Luther King Oratorical Contest. Uh, last year it was hosted by Channel Two. Uh, this year, we're looking for another host as well, but I would really encourage you to come to Pace Academy, really see what we are, and specifically what we have to offer.
Thank you. Well, I, I heard that from great things about, about the school, and I did attempt to come to the, the hot dog, uh, kebab, but there was actually no place to park.
Oh, wow, okay.
We actually, yeah, we have VIP, um, party for councilperson, next time we'll make sure that we make accommodations in, in you guys, definitely, you know, by the way. Thank you, we appreciate all that you're doing within the city, and, uh, we're great to be here. Uh, Mrs. Ball, we have one of our students right here, one of our accent, uh, three point five students, one of our parents as well, Mrs. Ball, so we have a lot of great names.
And what time is your bell?
It will be at five-thirty PM.
And you can give the last word, perfect, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our board vice president, Mrs. Floyd Jean Webb, who's actually up here in the audience, a resident of the city of Southfield, so I want to recognize her.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, the next individual to be recognized is Mr. Robert Muller. Once we have, and the next individual is Geraldine Monto. Do you include your baby's address, or do you have five things to say?
Good evening, my name is Geraldine Monto. Uh, within the restrictions of the time restraint here, I'd like to bring up a couple of subjects that I hope will be of interest to someone to do further research. I believe that the most danger to our public safety is not from each other, or from the lowly street criminal, but from those who have taken control of our nation. This state, like the state of New Mexico, once I hail, and the city of Albuquerque, and the city of Southfield, have in common the fact that they are strongholds of the fur masons. And it's no mere coincidence that down in Detroit is the largest fur mason temple in the world. That means that we have an opportunity, if we so choose, to turn this whole nation around from this area. Recently, we've had an election, but in fact, the voters are not the electorate. I refer you to the author, James Collier, his book Vote Scam, The Stealing of America. We have secret ballot count, and the people do not have purview of how the ballots are counted with this fancy software and electronic gadgetry. Recently, we had Veterans Day, propaganda going full force, and much has been made of Armistice Day at the eleventh hour of the eleventh day in eleventh month. And if you add up the numbers, you have the fur mason thirty-three there. I don't have time to go into all the numerology that's encoded in many of the events, but recently there was an announcement about the tornadoes that happened in this area, and one Illinois victim was quoted as saying on national television that it was quiet up until eleven o'clock, and then all hell broke loose, and this was eleven days before Thanksgiving, which is in the eleventh month, meaning that there were some shenanigans going on with those events. I mentioned the weather modification technology, that is not a conspiracy theory, but a reality, since the people who are involved in government agencies announce it for themselves in small print. Dealey Plaza, where on the twenty-second day of the eleventh month, and you have your fur mason thirty-three there, again, Dealey Plaza is marked with an obelisk, just as the Trinity Site in New Mexico and Washington DC, which is an ancient symbol of sun worship, which, to the sun worshippers of human sacrifices, and the fur mason, um, ritual of shooting people in the head. If you look at the assassinations of many in recent history, we have assassinations with the head being the target. Southfield Police Chief was announced recently as receiving assistance from the FBI with a crime against children's unit. If you review Attorney and former FBI agent from the nineteen seventies, eighties, Ted Nelson's work, he testified that he discovered after he retired from the FBI, that the FBI is involved with an organization, or it actually is founded within the corrupt organization of the FBI, that called the finders, and they procure children for nefarious activities. My experience in Albuquerque, New Mexico, with a crime against children's unit, works with the corrupt courts, and the corrupt, um, child protection agencies, also to procure children for nefarious activities. NAMLA, North American Mammoth Love Association, child pornography and child prostitution. This is a very serious matter, which is kept secret from the good people of this nation. Northland Mall, where I encountered security guys, I have to wonder why Northland Mall is on a prosperous business. I don't know much about money laundering, but the fact that you took a lot of time here at this meeting, talking about a PlayStation for children being placed within Northland Mall, makes me suspicious, in reference to the crime against children's unit. Northland Mall, a lot of your police officers told me, I don't need to go to the Northland Mall, you don't want to go there. Somebody gets a big write-off, but it's a very apt place to make a prosperous business. Why is it not? What is going on at Northland Mall that the good people of this area do not know about? And why would you want a place, a PlayStation for children within it? There's something seriously wrong with what is occurring. But as I mentioned earlier, evil people are in charge of this nation, and we are subjected to a multitude of deceptive propaganda, rituals, and certainties, particularly.
Your time is up.
And unless the good people...
Your time is up, thank you. Your time up, let's go, if you keep acting like that. All right. The next person that pushes to adjourn the council is Miss Pamela Gerald, you have five minutes for the rest.
And I'd like for you to start coming, coming right now. Ladies and gentlemen, rest of the council, and people here tonight, and to the viewers. Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven, dash zero one... Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I want to talk about, and this would be for the Principal from Pace Academy, a night program that I think he would be interested in. Wendy's here in Southfield on Telegraph near Twelve Mile. Just recently opened up, and this restaurant is probably the cleanest Wendy's and probably one of the cleanest restaurants we have in our city. And we have a lot of clean restaurants. They're doing a school fundraising opportunity. The school has an opportunity to earn fifty percent of the proceeds from the dining room, and it works like this. You get fifty percent of all the carryouts and all of the dining room money that's generated, but not through the drive-through. So what you basically have to do is call Wendy's, schedule for your school to have fundraising night. You need about five to six weeks maybe to promote it prior to the event. And what they will allow you to do is they will allow you to come in, set up tables. You can sell sweatshirts, coffee mugs. You can do canister collections for school donations for the various activities and projects that are going on at the schools. With schools hurting financially, they probably could use some fundraising, some donations. And then they'll put up flyers and posters to help you promote the event, and they would encourage you to do community calendars, like call all of the newspaper carriers and, you know, companies. They would ask you to do like a press release, Channel Two and local media, to let them know that you have such a fundraiser going on. And then they're encouraging you to tell the people that you know your family to come out and dine in the restaurant and take out the carryout. I think that's a great initiative. Wendy's came in, put a lot of money into that place. They did a lot with the sewage back there. They put up a brick wall, which some of these petitioners and developers are not even required to put up a brick wall. Some of them have gotten away with what the city thinks as a decorative fence. And I didn't know that decorative fences fall down so much and get struck down by lightning and be pushed down by elementary school kids. But I think that Wendy's did everything right. And just for the schools, some of the things that have happened with other schools doing the fundraising, they've had like guitar playing and singing at the restaurant. They've had skits with the kids. Anything to make your night memorable is what you want to do. So, to the principal, I'll give you the contact information for my friend, and I think this is just wonderful. So I'm saying to the schools, if you need money for some of these after-school projects or for your kids to do these field trips, Wendy's, your own Wendy's restaurant on Telegraph, one of the cleanest Wendy's and probably one of the cleanest restaurants in the city of Southfield, is giving you an opportunity in your school to earn fifty percent of the dining room proceeds and the takeouts, but it does not apply to the drive-through. And, Mr. Moss, I want to compliment you for what you said in the previous meeting that occurred at COW, fighting for the people to say that their five-minute time limit should not be taken away from them. You know, we always talk about Southfield being a trendsetter and being innovative, but yet when it comes down to the people, you got to always want to try to do what everyone else is doing. Detroit gives their people a minute. Bloomfield gives their people two minutes. Are you a trendsetter? Are you a leader? Are you a follower? You have to decide as a city what you're going to be. And just what you said, Geraldine, giving the people the five minutes, acknowledging the fact that it used to be three minutes and council passed the resolution back in the early nineties to make it five minutes, they did that for a reason. So, thank you for standing up for the people, for the people getting their five minutes and their just due time. And if you're going to consider cutting down on the people's time, you guys should limit your time to how many questions you can ask. Thank you.
All right. We'll move to the council portion of our agenda. The council back.
I just wanted to comment on something that we attended last week. Mayor, Councilman Moss, and Fraser and I attended the Police Academy Graduation, Citizens Police Academy. I really salute the Police Department for running this ten-week program to, of course, for everyday residents to learn about the operations of our Police Department, which was the second graduation. And the enthusiasm of the twenty-one people who went through the program was just incredible. They got so much out of it. And what a, you know, I applaud the people that took the time to take the course, but I also applaud our Police Department for offering such a program. It's part of our community policing efforts, and obviously it was a big hit with the Police Department as well as the citizens that stepped up. I have never seen a group of people more laudatory towards policemen. They even gave police officers some gifts, appreciation, one thing after another. It was a really very nice affair. And I just wanted to mention that again, how well done it was. If you're starting again, I'm hoping next year.
David.
Jessica.
All right. Fraser.
Hasn't improved much. I would just like to say that Mayor and I attended the National League Cities Conference up in Seattle, Washington, and there were a lot of things that were talked about in sessions that we both attended that are very important to the city of Southfield. One especially is the food trucks. There are different communities around the country presented their food truck programs, and they had to hand up, and I think we almost picked up one that we will share with the council as we start to consider the food truck issue because when we had the food truck rally, and it was very popular, people were wall-to-wall or across the street. And I think it's something that we need to consider in our placemaking and bringing people downtown. There are also some other things that came up. I brought home a DVD from another exhibitor, and it's a different kind of a wall that separates the residential people from the business people. And it's made, it looks like a block wall, but it's not made out of blocks. And the thing that I tried to think of as I was picking these different things up to bring back is that perhaps the council ought to consider having, and maybe it's an ad hoc committee, to look at new things that are being offered to see if it's something that we're interested in and then give it to the staff, the administration and staff, to take a look at, to study it, to see if it's something that would fit in the city of Southfield. But if we're going to be open for business, we have to be friendly to the business people and make things as easy for them as possible and not lose the quality of building that we have. And I think that sometimes we're behind the curve because other people are doing things that we haven't decided that we want to try. And we've brought different subjects up over the years that tried to bring some things up to the current stat, current time. So I will be more than happy to bring that DVD in, and we can review it maybe at the COW meeting and see if it's something that we'd be interested in taking a look at. It's not that long.
Councilman Moss.
Yeah, I wanted to mention another ribbon cutting that we recently attended. Councilman Cyberg, Trevor Lombard, and members of the chamber and myself. I was for the Great Lakes Culinary Center earlier this month, which is new headquarters for the Great Lakes Hotel Supply, and it's the grand opening of the Great Lakes Culinary Center. It's on Nine Mile and Telegraph Road in Southfield, a very large investment here in the city of Southfield. It's a state-of-the-art kitchen and events venue in Southfield that offers food service to professionals and the Detroit community, the opportunity to test the latest kitchen equipment, attend cooking classes and demonstrations, and host private events in a beautiful modern space. I'm reading from their materials, but, you know, seeing is believing, and it is a remarkable venue. It was a vacant office space that they refurbished and put a huge investment in. And I think one of the most remarkable things about it is that the owner is a person who grew up in the city of Southfield, and as we were talking, he said, "There's no place where I'd rather start up a business than here." So if we can get more of those success stories to somebody who knows the value of our community and knows what a gem it is and wanting to reinvest in it, I think we will have a lot of momentum going for us. So I really recommend anybody who has an interest in the food arts to check it out, and anyone who wants to have an event in Southfield, it's a beautiful venue right on Nine Mile and Telegraph Road.
Councilman Madamir.
Many times officials go to visit the city. They outside seminars and everything, they come back to the ideas and tell us about it. But we don't think, and they don't think of the ramifications of some of the projects that they bring back. For example, the food trucks. Food trucks come along in parks and every place else, and they talk about the business that we have here and we want to help out their system. What about all the businesses here that have stores and pay taxes and employ people? Then the truth, there's a truth to the food trucks come along at parties and everything and really hurt our business stalls. But nobody thinks about that. The visitors pay taxes, the food trucks don't pay taxes. You want the business trucks and close off our other stores or vice versa? Think about that. And you hear all these things come back from different cities and states, but we don't think of Austin really.
All right. Do you want to come to Fraser?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of statements. One is, the value of going to these seminars and conferences, you find out facts, and food trucks do pay taxes. And we found that out when we learned the information from the other communities. They do pay taxes. In fact, some of them even, when they park on the street, they have to feed the parking dealers in addition to paying taxes. But the other thing is, both Fred and I were down at the Great Lakes Day in the morning before the ribbon cut, so we got the, we have a fresh start.
Yeah, we got your leftovers.
All right. Is Neil? All right, we'll move to the mayor's portion of the agenda.
Yeah, first of all, I want to say to everyone celebrating Hanukkah and Thanksgiving, we have so much to be thankful for in the celebration of the holiday for the Jewish community and it's being held on the same day as the exciting time of the city and Jewish family I've spoken to are excited about the families being together for those two holidays coming together. For Thanksgiving, it's the time for us to give thanks and pause and always say the greatest gift is having the family together and to be able to, I know in my case, have some of the most amazing cooks in the world, now I'll be cooking for three days. But we have a lot to be thankful for here in the city. As much as we can focus on the negatives, we have so many good things. I just want to comment on the fire we just recently had in one of our High Line buildings. In our fire department, despite some heat-ups that happened along the way, we're able to clear the building out, extinguish the fire, and we did not lose any lives. We received letters from the Red Cross saying how we had one of the best organized and synchronized teams and to my emergency response team, to our firefighters, to our police, we really have a lot to be thankful for. And because of that hard work, there's families now that have, may not have their physical possessions, but they have each other, and I'm sure they're celebrated and thankful for that more than anything. I do want to say that we just recently celebrated or observed, not celebrated, but observed and gave honor on Veterans' Day. It's always a great time. I just want to say to every veteran, for your time given, for the sacrifice you made for our freedom, I thank you so much. I'm proud that this city has taken the time every year to honor and respect our veterans. It means a lot. My husband and I talk about that all the time, is that, you know, when you go home at night and you lay down and you sleep, and, you know, we have police and we have other people there to protect us, we really sleep easy, and it's those who put their lives on the line that we in America can have the freedoms we do. So we really thank you. And to the families of those who gave the ultimate sacrifice, we honor you and thank you as well. I did want to comment on the food truck because of the conference that Councilman Fraser and I both attended. You know what was interesting about it? We were talking about the exact same things that we were talking about, how do you regulate them? How long are they allowed to park? How do you ensure that their food quality is regulated and good? But what's interesting, and Councilman, I'm glad you brought that up, I actually was encouraged to go to one of the restaurants where the food truck that turned into brick and mortar. And there's a number of them that started their business on a food truck and actually ended up opening a business in brick and mortar. And this restaurant now has two restaurants, started on the streets of Seattle, and now it's two restaurants physically in that city. And that was what every city that was in that room talking about the food truck segment has been happening. So when we look at these movements, we learn that we actually have an opportunity to grow businesses in our city from that. And the taxes and the revenue that they have to pay in order to operate, it's how, that's how we sit around and we say this is a good thing. But our one concern is how can we make it easier? There is one food truck, one city where they have food truck Fridays, and every Friday evening they have bands, they close down the street, the food trucks come for three hours. People on the street might be getting that ride, but every Friday, and people come from all over to be in their downtown. It's just really different things people to go to the annual festivals and tie into the food trucks. But that is something that's just not happening here. It's happening around the country. And now these different mayors and council people are there trying to figure out, how do we make this excitement happen? We had one town that had no restaurants, and if these food trucks started coming, the in that town, a little small sleepy town, would come to life. People would come to this town who never would come because they didn't have restaurants. So there's so many different ways we make it to Southfield way. And it's not that anyone will tell us how we do it, but we look at the best practices. And then, as you know, the council will grind it and shape it and make it into what would work for Southfield. So I think I'm always excited when I go to learn and how are other people doing things. And I also wanted to talk about two things that opened in the city. I cut the ribbon yesterday for Twice-Night Upscale Resale. It's on Greco Road. It's a new resale store, and if you haven't been by, and many of you know that Southfield Christians have no basic model for resale. They were actually mentors and advise them, and the sorority, which I'm a member of, Delta Six Vegas, are the ones that are going to be operating this new Twice-Night Upscale Resale Store. So I was glad to do that. And if many of you don't know, because there was not a ribbon cutting, but we now have a Sears appliance store that's on Southfield Road. So now, if you want to buy an appliance, you can literally go in your city in Southfield and buy that appliance. And it has appliance stores that have been opened up. And last... And lastly, I just wanted to weigh in that the season is changing now. And as we look at the last pickup for leaves, ladies and gentlemen, the homeowners will be this weekend. And so we have been given direction that it'll be expanded, Mrs. Charette, and...
Yes, to December night because of conditions for the summer, but summer and all the rest. So December night, that gives two weekends.
So we have two more weekends to clean up the leaves. Please clean them up. You all know that if there is a snow and a fall, if these leaves are not picked up, they clog the streets and that becomes a sheet of ice, which is not a safe issue. And we really want to make sure that we observe that because I always get the panic call, especially if it's a warm day. Man, I just raked my leaves in the middle of December. So please, we got just two additional weeks to please rake your leaves and get them up and so we can pick them up at something you pay for research taxes. And have a great holiday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lane.
One more, few old South City food trucks, they pay taxes when you catch them. They don't pay taxes, you must catch them, just like the Gem shows here. None of them pay taxes unless the county sends in the inspectors and gets the taxes immediately. Unless that, so let's not kidding ourselves. Beautiful speech, Mayor. Food trucks are helping for us.
I love them. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to the administration, administrator.
I have nothing further to add. Thank the council for their extra hard work this evening. We had a study session started at 5:30 with five items and appreciate the extra time the council put in on our behalf.
Thank you. No, I don't wish. The attorney, we'll move to the special treasurer, special engineering, and we have a special report for Mr. Loenberg. So Mr. Paccas.
I move the special report of Mr. Loenberg for Michigan Government Finance Officers Fall Conference.
Board.
We have a motion by Councilman Frazier to approve the special report for the September 29 through October 1st meeting. Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Yeah, the chair, I move that Mr. Loenberg's special report being approved to the Michigan Municipal Treasures Association Fall Conference, Jefferson.
Board.
We have a motion by Councilman Frazier, Councilman Frazier to approve the special report for the October 21st through 23rd meeting. Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. We move to an act of ordinance.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Paccas, it's Frazier.
Go ahead.
I want to speak to the...
All right, Councilman Frazier.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1660 or the Civic Center Plaza Association.
We have a motion by Councilman Frazier supported by Councilman Moss to enact ordinance. Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
I motion carries. And we move to an act, ordinance 17, Mr. Councilman Paccas.
Yes, council, I, this is a very, very special request and that it is the corner twelve of Southfield, the St. Leach property in Long Island. And I would like to see the site plan and the enactment of the ordinance on the same night. The variances on the site plan, as far as the multiple, and again, I would like to see the document that explains the site plan for the result.
Are you seeking a motion?
I'm in motion that this could postpone until the site plan goes before us, then it be at the same time.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone by Mr. Paccas, supported by Mr. Mann. All in favor?
I have a question.
Councilman Moss.
I think the, does this include the entire lot or this is just the residential? Or does this include the actual retail portion or everything? Would you be interested?
They had two ordinances, they had two ordinances from residential to B2 and RMM, and then one section is P1. So it'd be the, all these zones.
Would you consider just doing the residential? I think that was where the site plan pickup was. I thought that, you know, that long night we came to a consensus that we were okay with the retail portion of it. My understanding is that they just wanted to be shovel ready on that portion, I believe, because the site plan was approved on the actual retail portion, if I'm not mistaken. I understand your concerns about the residential, but I think we approved the site plan and zoning for the retail portion, including the Applebee's. And the only thing that was supposed to come back to council is the site plan only for the residential. Do we, is there kind of a answer on that?
Mr. Crowe, can you weigh in?
Well, yeah, that would be...
It's through the chair. The, correct, the rezoning to RMM and B2 was introduced. The site plan for the commercial portion was approved and the special use of law for the Applebee's was approved that night. Request to postpone, the residential was made and that is likely to come back on December 16th. And we have been working with the developer to eliminate the variances that were required as part of the residential portion.
So my concerns are that, you know, delaying it another month makes, you know, the ground a little, even just a little colder. And I know that they wanted to be quickly on this. I'll use, you'll, I have just another question for the planner. Are they, would this delay the project until the spring, do you believe? Because I want to make sure that they get the opportunity to move if they want, if they fit, especially with an approved site plan and an approved zoning.
Christian, the city attorney, now, we have one ordinance, which is 1617, which includes all three zones.
That's correct. I was waiting for an opportunity. We didn't do separate ordinances. So you have one ordinance that's up for enactment and it included both of the rezonings on the residential as well as the retail. If we had done it at separate ordinances, I think the thought process of Councilman Moss would be correct. But you have one ordinance, and I don't think you can bifurcate now and say, we'll enact a piece of an ordinance and not the other piece. So I think at this point, you have one ordinance and that's either going to be enacted or postponed.
We have a question for the attorney, Councilman Frazier.
Well, I think it's a lot more risky to not enact this ordinance than it is to postpone it. If we postpone it, we've already been warned that the Applebee's register is hanging on by a thread. And if we postpone it any longer, we're going to lose the Applebee's register. And we know that we have control over the site plan, but the site plan comes for the residential. And if we have a concern with the residential, we can control that even though we enact the ordinance that we've already written. And I'm all for going forward with enacting this ordinance and working on the site plan until we're agreeable to the site plan because I don't want to lose the Applebee's register.
If I can't, if you're losing them, I'll thank you.
You know, I'd like to quote our city administrator. Everyone is entitled to an opinion, but there's only one that has facts.
Right now, is that it, Mr. ...?
That's it.
Right here. Okay.
Maybe the applicant is trying to schedule a site plan committee meeting for December 2nd on the residential site plan portion. And at that time, the council site plan committee would make the recommendation, Eric, move forward to the 16th or can't. That was the direction from the previous meeting. So that has been moving through the process. It will be coming to site plan committee on December 2nd. And they still can make determination if it's ready to move to the council on the 16th. I cannot speak for the developer, but I do know that times of the essence on the retail portion, that's all I can say.
Councilwoman, do you want?
Yeah, I have a couple, I have a couple of concerns here. There are a lot of issues here. We're rushing on the residential because somebody's lawyer, Mr. Jonah, has said there's a demand for this apartment, high end, he calls it, renting, fourteen, fifteen hundred. I question that because we had many tax appeals from our apartment owners. We've never had tax appeals from our apartment owners. We've had many, many tax appeals this year because of their vacancy rate. If you drive around the city and even look at the paper, you will see that most of these apartment owners have been advertising residence bonuses if they would refer somebody that would rent the apartments. And they've gone from $250 all the way up to $400. So that tells me that there is not a demand for these new apartments. There's a demand for tenants to apartments that we have. And we have many apartment buildings. I just have a big problem with this particular, I think we've been very hasty about this. And the other thing is, there's been talk that Mr. Jonah wanted to have a resale Goodwill store and a large one. Mr. Crowe said he's, I'm interfering with the conversation here, but from what I understand, Mr. Crowe spoke to Mr. Paccas that Mr. Jonah said, no, he didn't want the, that particular organization there because they only want to pay two to three dollars per square foot. Yet other people in the real estate industry tell me that Goodwill is building all over Michigan at rates of ten to 12 dollars per square foot. And Mr. Jonah is wanting like 15 dollars, I guess. So this, I don't think we're ready. I think we're rushing into something that we don't have all the information on.
Through the chair. This was a question that was posed to Mr. Jonah by the council last time he was here about check gassing stores and...
That's different.
What type of, and he unquote, he said, no, he's not going to have those plus our zone, he doesn't allow it. During the discussion, I asked him about resale shops. He stated that he would not allow resale shop in his business. He had been approached by one of the Goodwill or something. They just inquired about his development. He said that he wasn't interested. What he stated to me is that resale shops typically go for eight to 10 dollars per square foot rent. And you usually find those in older shopping centers that have trouble renting on space. But that he will be demanding 22 dollars and up for this upscale development. So resale shop would not afford, could not afford the types of rent on new establishment would be looking for. Plus, he stated that he would not allow one to be in his business. And this was the conversation that we had this morning as a follow-up to questions that were raised.
Well, he has told other people something different. And I think, I just don't like that we're getting all this different information. I'm concerned about it. I think we're in such a hurry because we don't want him to break ground when the ground is cold. But we need these things answered, and I don't feel that we've got enough answers. I'd rather postpone it until we really know what's going on here. Because I don't, I just think we're getting too many variations of the story. And this is our last premier commercial property outside of the city center. It's a very important site, and I think we have to do it right. And I'm concerned about this, and I'm not, I think it's wise to postpone it at this point.
All right, we're going to move forward. Councilman Moss.
Here's my concern about where this discussion is heading, and I'll try and be brief. The last council meeting, we had two major projects come before city council. One was at city center, it was the Arthur Lofts. One was at 12 Mountain Southfield Road and it's the Ark and Jonah development. We sent the entire piece of the city center project back to site plan. We sent it all. We approved the rezoning to the ODD, but we wanted to maintain control over what it looked like and we sent it back. For the Ark and Jonah development, we said we were comfortable by a vote of this council that we want to move forward with the retail and the Applebee's. We approved the site plan, we approved the rezoning. For the residential piece to that, we said we were uncomfortable with the site plan. I was comfortable with it, but the rest of council or the majority of council that night said, no, let's send the site plan for the residential back to site plan. But we do approve of the rezoning. Now tonight, probably about seven minutes ago, we just enacted the ordinance for the city center development without site plan because we were comfortable that this council can still go forward with the zoning while still having control of the site plan. So what's the difference between this one? Why are we debating site plan here just when we're enacting the zoning that we already voted on and the site plan that we already approved a month ago? I don't see the difference between a unanimous vote we took seven minutes ago and now we're just trying to delay a project that this council debated until whatever o'clock in the morning and got to a point where we finally made it so the developer felt that he still wanted to go through this process and the council was comfortable by still having a little bit of control. I don't see the difference between the vote we just took and the vote we need to take to move this project forward.
The difference is location, but we'll go and talk in and saturate this time.
I don't know why we're re debating this. I don't know why we're having this debate time. We made these decisions and, you know, we, you know, we're, I mean, this guy whittled back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And the constant criticism of the project, this man is bringing us something unique. He's bringing us something that's higher end. And anybody who wants to attack the development is selling the city short. We need a new product in housing. Those apartments that are having the rent move-in specials are not the same kind of product that this man is willing to build here. This is a totally different product. And as Councilman Moss said, we will still see the site plan. We've already given the go-ahead on the content. I am not going to support postponing this. This man needs an answer.
Let's go to Councilman Lane and then we'll see more and then we'll wrap it up with you, Councilman Paccas, because we do have a motion on the table and we will hold on to the motion.
Okay. Every time I come to a meeting, there's changes. Changes, changes, changes. You get all mixed up. And it is not a high-class development. It's a lower-class development a developer can build. The strip mall is second-rate, everything is second-rate here. The A, these three, I don't know, somebody talks to them. It is not a high-class development. It is a low-class development. We hear different things. We hear a resale shop is coming in, now the plan is, well, we must be working to them. The planner says, no, the site isn't, it's high-priced, that's below me. This is the lowest type of development that can happen in the city of Southfield, in that area. It reminds me of Warren Avenue and all the Detroit buildings, all going into, into a heap of junk.
The, the, Councilwoman, do you want?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to what Mr. Councilman Moss said on the enactment of the Civic Center Plaza from Mr. Crowe. We are not talking about the site plan here. It is the Oberleak Development District that is being approved. That's something quite different.
Councilman Paccas.
No, Chairman, I, I dislike a council person that's going to be telling me how to protect developments in the city so that they are good for the long-lasting heart of this city. I've been here now, you know, 46 years. You're going to tell me how to protect a corner from commercial? I might really think that you better take a second thought about that, Mr. Cypher. I've seen stuff being come through here that I can't believe was approved. And I hear things, that's all I want to do is get confirmation of what development is going to take place here. And even though it's not commercial, what is the next meeting? December 5th? There we have it. Chairman?
December 2nd.
Councilman, that's...
December 2nd.
To wait till December 2nd for giving the developer to confirm, what I understand of other developers, that that isn't so. And I am very concerned about the city of Southfield when we do not have a grocery store from Myers all the way to the end going east... from Myers all the way to the end, going east to the end of whatever. Even Hillers is closed, you know? And you're trying to talk about grocery stores. You have, you have the disappearance of restaurants. You have a whole series of things where, where I am very concerned with the future of the city. You read the cranes, town center's in foreclosure. They talk about why is it seventy-four percent occupied? And they say, well, because you don't have services for those poor tenants in these buildings. And we sit here and wait and wait, and it's been going thirty years now, and we're addressing the needs of these people who are leasing space in these office buildings. And, and all I'm trying to say to you is that this, this development here has never brought, has never brought a, a complete set site plan on this site before this council. I mean, they brought a corner in that had a monument on it, that in twenty-four inches from it was a big pole that held up the signal lights. And it was under site plan. And it's all allowed to move it because of being in conflict with the pole. But you don't see it moved. You don't see the landscape. We talked about the berms that are on Twelve Mile Road. Are they going to be there, aren't they? So we tried to negotiate between the buildings, could you enlarge between the buildings? And then maybe site the berms. So, but we haven't actually seen a complete set of drawings for this entire site that's been approved. And here we have a corner that takes in all of it. And I just need confirmation to December second to talk to Mr. Jonah, see what is it. Council is welcome to sit in on the meeting, but I want to know what the guy is going to build. You were talking about garages for the multiples. You know, he said this is a new design. I went nine mile in, nine mile in Woodford, east side of Woodward Avenue in Ferneyle, to see the same design. I mean, it's not, no, did you see the same apartments? So I, I guess what I'm saying is that, that I am just cautious. And if I have to be overly cautious, I guess that's where it's going to be.
All right. We have a motion on the table to postpone an empty ordinance sixteen, seventeen, until December the second. It's a motion by Councilman Focasie, supported by Councilman Lamb. And if we could do a roll call, please, that's fair. Motion to postpone.
Mr. Focasie?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
No.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
No.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Seiber?
No.
Do we have four in favor, three against, for motion to postpone this case?
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Mayor. I have said this a number of times, and I know that we have a, it's not a development committee. Would this council be open to hearing from developers? We, we say that we want to have control of the development. And we say that it troubles me that if we hear rumors in the street that we as a government body have a document, that rumors in the street can actually influence us and, as a government body versus documents that we look at. People can say, even people who don't or are competitors can say anything to us. But we control what happens because we have legal documents. That troubles me. It concerns me that we postponed lately at a rate that's been unprecedented in our process. We have never sent that project after it's gone through site plan, been through a power, and we evaluate it. I don't know if development has changed. There is, but to me, that's a fundamental flag for doing business in this. And to say that we go through all of the processes that we as government body approve, and someone can just say, I'm uncomfortable, I want to postpone it. And I'm, I'm going to ask our clerk to, to report how many times we have sent that or postponed when the body has approved it and sent it forward. There is, every time we do that to a developer, that sends a flag of not being a city that is development friendly. It sends a flag that there is something wrong with our process because it's either the developer, go through your planning commission, and I go through your site plan, and then I go to your power, and then I come to your council meeting, and then all of a sudden this discussion, okay, I don't like it, postpone it, and send it back again. There is a breakdown of government that needs to be fixed, or else we need to change our process. And I'm very concerned about that because I am giving more than calls about how Southfield is hard to do business with. And I am very concerned about the process. And this is not saying that the council's wrong, it's not saying that the developer's wrong, but this process is falling apart. Because if we say that we, we as government body, if you want to do business in Southfield, these are the steps you follow, and that developer votes along those steps. And every now and then, I can understand something coming up, but it has to become the norm. If one council person does not like the development, then we send it back.
Well, no, it does take consensus, so it's not a one.
Well, it does take consensus. But why are we sending, postponing so many developments?
Because we don't want any junk.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the clerk to provide that to me. And I, I want to talk about that. Mr. Lamb, I'm not here to fight with you, and I'm not being disrespectful to you, and you will not be disrespectful to me. I have a concern, just like every other person who's elected here. And that is a concern happening. Because Southfield, the little premier property that we have, must, we need to develop, that we need to generate some new tax rate. We are, we give tax, tax evasions, and we do that because we know we're trying to keep our businesses. But my goodness, the little bit of property that we have, maybe we haven't developed it so long, we don't know. Maybe that's the problem. We need to look at our property because we are doing this at a rate that we have never done it before.
All right. Councilman Lamb.
We'll make it, we'll make it easy. A developer should not build junk. And that's what this is, junk. The experience that Mr. Don Focasie has is right. This is not a good development. This is, this is a second-grade development. That's why. I'm not against the process or anything. The process is correct, but he's always changing everything, changing. We don't know what he's going to build there. He's changing because we make...
Excuse me, Councilman Lamb.
You know, he changes because he thinks we're bunch of fools. I think some of you are, but some of you are not. Not the right developer.
Councilman Lamb, that was Taffy.
Madam Chair, all due respect, Mayor, I'd like you to sit down in one of the site plan meetings and hear the discussion that goes on when you hear an explanation of what's being put on that piece of land and how it does change. It changes every time, how many variances Terry has played with so far?
Well, initially, he had nine-way curry west, but based on the input from the site plan committee and council, it's down to two, possibly three favors.
We talked to him to get a widening between the two shopping strips so that it be safe and, and, and along the sides, and short the distance of the berms so that, so that they give that leeway so they don't have the metal. So, so things have changed since the site plan has even come before the council. The, the corner, what's, what the corners going to look like has never been shown. So, so I, I believe he is a good developer. I just, for example, his, his development on the sixteen mile road Saturday for two hours. And, and he is a good developer. I, I just don't see that same terraces and things that he has done on sixteen mile that I see here. And, and it's not that I am going to say, oh, do what they did in Troy. I'm just saying to you that, that I don't know, outside of the strip of a hundred feet wide for so many feet and, and doesn't go back, it's partially seven to sixty feet deep, and what is going to be behind the shopping center? I mean, those things, I believe, have to be important to us to know what is going to be placed there. Mr. Seiber himself said, hey, let's give him some more variances so he'll put garages instead of, of the parking decks. And I said, or the sheds. And I said, fine, if that's working out, get something down concrete so you know exactly what we can give and what we can get. And so, if I've complicated things, it's, it's the way it's presented. And when someone presents it in, in a format that is professional, I'll say it that way, then it's an easy thing to take care of. And, and drivers across the street talk about that one. Every plant for thirty years showed it shopping. Every services that's been surveyed in the, in the, in the office buildings that said we need services. The cranes just said that Southfield lacks services to the office people. And, and so what came before it is, is the storage. Storage, they're right in the middle of supposedly residential and retail property. So, so, yeah, I don't want storage there. I, I want retail. I want service stores there. That's what the whole city center is supposed to be. If we start putting storage in there, you know, then you look at, at the site, I mean, if you're going on, if you looked at the site, they brought this in, it's a planner last time, there was a building, office building, and it had parking under our ordinance sufficient to house that office building. We've taken that piece of property and we have zoned the front of it commercial, and we have zoned the north end commercial on the same site. And I said, how can we not have, it would require so much parking for the office building and not need any parking for the residential? We don't have on-street parking for, for the retail. And, and so you start looking at numbers of how many parking spots are necessary when you're taking all this commercial at the north and south end, and you have the middle park. And then if you have, for example, a use of the lower level of the loft, like the yoga, which you're going to have maybe thirty, forty people at, where's everybody going to park? And, and I think that's reasonable to ask these questions. I mean, why should we end up with a problem if we can resolve it earlier on?
Thank you.
For the chair.
Let me go to Councilman Lamb, and then we'll come back to you.
Okay. You know, I, I think there's a way. We have to make this work. We have to. The citizens have elected us and are counting on us to make this work. And I don't sit on the site plan committee. I think that right now the site plan committee is Mr. Lamb, Ms. Seymour, Mr. Focasie. My suggestion, and really the heart of this suggestion, is to make this work and to take into consideration that you're bringing forward, to come up with a site plan that we are okay with. When, when the site plan committee approved the last site plan, those of us who don't sit on the site plan committee take that as it was vetted. We have minutes from that meeting. It came to council with, with our committee's approval to move it forward. You, you have to be our eyes and ears in that process because I don't sit on the site plan committee. I sit on other committees for city council. So, at the last meeting, it was mentioned that we have to wait for the right development. We'll make this the right development. Make it work. Vet it through the site plan committee with suggestions for material, suggestions for design. Well, you sit up, you're the chair of the committee, that can help you make it work.
You were vaguely voting on the committee.
I didn't.
Oh, yes. I used to manage it. Can we let this progress?
But my, my comment is...
This guy built in Troy, Rochester, beautiful stuff. And he saw us, why he's going to build here, it's junk.
Well, we have, we have a disagreement on that, and that's okay. I thought the site plan, the site plan for this project was okay. As chairman of the site plan committee, bring suggestions that can move this project forward. My concern is that all of this runaround is going to give him the impression that nothing will work. So, things that can...
It's going to change, it's going to...
Well, well, give him the exact suggestion. Okay, okay. Well, I want to make sure, well, I want to make sure whatever happens in the next site plan committee does pass with our approval. We cannot go into the site plan committee with the expectation, well, we, well, somehow it has to work out where we get something out of that site plan committee, whether it's the developer who changes or it's council that allows other things to move forward so that the next time this comes before full council, we have a product that we're okay with. We cannot deny this project any longer. And if you're waiting for the right development, we got to tailor-make it. We have a development who's willing to invest sixteen million dollars into this corner. We have to take him up on that offer and fix it and make it work for the corner. I'm okay with it going back to site plan because that's what the council has decided. But we have to have a product that is ready to be voted on at this next council meeting. And I do have a question for the attorney. Is there a way to break up this ordinance so that the zoning remains intact? Because I, we have to, we have to show that this council is leading halfway, that this council is putting forward a good faith effort, that we do want something there. We want your sixteen million dollar investment in this corner. Can we break it up so that we approve of the rezoning but still have to revisit the site?
Can we win that? So, that's not going to happen tonight. That's not going to happen. We've already had a motion. But let's go to Mr. Crowe to get his...
I'm curious if there is a way.
Well, I mean, you've already introduced one ordinance covering both pieces. So the only thing I can see is if, if that motion was rescinded and it was brought back in the format of a separate ordinance for each rezoning. But to rescind, you put everything back on the table again. The whole rezoning would be back on the table.
Madam Chair, December second, December second is, is just around the corner. It's next week. So, I mean, I don't, delaying it one week really doesn't mean a thing. I don't intend to hold up this development. I want to just make sure that it's going to be the development that it was presented to us. And as far as maybe, I'm saying, maybe with somebody who doesn't have the experience I have on it, I will, I will remove myself from the site plan. If I can read site plans and I know development, and I'll, I'll see the plans when they come before council, I don't have to see them at site plan.
All right. Mr. Crowe.
Just a procedural question. We were planning on scheduling a site plan committee meeting at five o'clock on Monday. Something like the council postpones this until the second, which is your seven o'clock meeting, the whole. The council prefer just having this review all together at seven o'clock and, okay, I just, because in the past, sometimes it goes to full council. So we're going to meet at five o'clock still at the site plan committee and then bring him back at seven o'clock to discuss the zoning issue and update report on the site plan. Okay? I just want to be clear.
Madam Chair, I want to remove myself from the site plan committee and put somebody that, that is opposing it because I just want them to understand what's going on. Like I said, I can read the plan. I mean, look at what's happening, but he's such a rush to build on this piece. I mean, I called Jerry Winkowski this morning and said, what the heck are all the, all the consumer trucks? That must have thirty trucks, forty trucks parked all along Southfield Road, all heavy equipment, you know? And they said, well, they're doing the project at Lincoln and Southfield Road. And, and so, I mean, you have all that equipment there for how long? I mean, it's just, and the one thing after that, why would you give the guy permission to get on your lot if you're going to tear down the building?
We've got a little discussion for the mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, to reiterate that all of the concerns that have been gone up, we've got to find a way to resolve those issues so that we don't continue to send, send it back and forth. And it's nothing wrong with the council saying, no, I don't want the development. That's clear then to continue and sending it back and forth. But I, it has, you know, Councilman Focasie, myself, others... But I, it has, you know, Councilman Fercas, myself, others, you know, we've been through all of the, the site plan and we have to send a clear message. That's what I'm saying. It doesn't, sitting back in the background, it's not a clear consistent message of what is wanted. And that's where I feel that we can improve and get better. When we look at the site plan, the site plan committee brings it forward. At that county, if we see something we want, it should go back. If you want to send it back, where they go, they keep moving forward and then we start from the full council on TV and send it back. And that's the part of it, when you're sitting down in the audience and your developer sees that, what is the council going to do?
It's all the same, bring it back.
It has to suggest this development.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cybert, receiving when they move in.
I just want to say, I'll gladly take Mr. Fercas' place on the site plan.
Okay, what do you have?
Through the chair, in the planning, through the chair. In the planning, we do have tree lighting that happens on December 2nd. So just, so folks know that.
Okay, so they'll have to make this site plan meeting a little bit earlier. All right, Ms. Seymour.
All developers are not created equal. We have, Mr. Jonah is known for doing strip malls. That's what he's known for. There are people on this council, unfortunately, that have never really taken an interest in learning about land development, about land use. The two most important things that we do on this council are land use and finance. This developer has come in with ideas. He changes it. He wants approval on what he says. He's moving things around too. I don't see any problem with our being in control. He wants to be controlled and I think he's jerking us around a lot of things. I don't feel comfortable with a number of things that he's proposed. I don't feel comfortable with things that other professionals in the industry have told me that he is considering, but he doesn't give it all back to us. I think it's certainly within our purview to take the time to go over this. Some people are so excited about any development there, they're just willing to accept that this is a wonderful development and they really aren't looking at some of the problems that exist. And I appreciate that people want development, but it is important to wait for the right thing and it is important to do it right. And Mr. Fercas is right. Land use has been my primary concern in this, in this city since I first got involved over environmental issues. I take this particular development very, very seriously. It can be a disaster or it can be a success. And if it takes a little more time to be thorough and to get it right and to have this person tell us something without saying, "Yes, I'm going to do this and yes, approve this, but we don't see anything and we don't get a commitment," that's wrong. We're being jerked around and I don't like it. I know the man is capable of doing good work, but he has also done some things where he has things I would not want in this city and other cities and another city. And I'm not trying to pick on the person, but this is a fact of what has been going on and what's happened elsewhere. We want to get it right. If it takes a little more time, so be it. We just cannot say, "Oh, we're so desperate for development." If every development, we want to just bow down and say, "Do what you want as long as you don't break any laws." No, we can't do that. We're going to live with this, whatever goes there. We're going to have it there for a long time. So it's important that we get it right. And anyone that feels differently about that, I think you need to go back and take some courses.
All right. Just going to end that discussion. I have to say that this piece is a very neat piece of the premier corner in Southfield. We have to take our time in developing and seeing no other items on the agenda this meeting.